Graham?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. Lot discussed in there. And at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to seal the minutes of executive session. Oh, I guess a motion to come out of executive session. My mistake. So moved that was, and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session. If I might. Motion to make that sealed? Anyone? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we're out of the executive session officially and into the regular session tonight. Roll call. Mrs. Lavoy, please.
Glenn Shidley.
I'm here.
Greg LaBassinier.
Here.
Carrie McGee.
Here.
Karen Carlson.
Here.
Deborah Bacon.
Here.
Graham Waters.
Present.
Nick Gorm.
Here.
Okay. And Mr. Spearmun, I thank you for hanging on. And if you could be so kind to make us the Pledge of Allegiance. So.
Aye. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And while we're still standing, if you could please bow your heads for a moment. Dear Lord, we ask for your blessings here in Coventry tonight, your guidance. We ask for your blessings over the two police officers that were shot and killed in Ohio this week on a domestic violence call, which all too often is in violence, and their families and their communities. We pray for our safety here in Coventry, our public officials, our public safety officials, police, fire, rescue, and all of our citizens in Coventry. This I ask. Amen. And Mr. Spearmun, the evacuation plan, if needed, please.
In case of an emergency, the two acres in the rear, go to your right or left. It'll take the outside. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're set and going. President's comments, I'll make them brief. A just first meeting in February, council meeting. It happens to be, as I think we all might know, February 12th, the remembrance birthday of our very famous President, Abraham Lincoln, one of the great leaders that we've had, been blessed in our country, and all the good work that he was able to bring to our country in a very turbulent time. We also, as far as President's comments go, I know that we have our Valentine's Week Wednesday, and we ask for all our families to be cognizant of the fact that families are precious and take care of your kids, grandkids, spouses, friends, loved ones, and have a happy Valentine's Day. And other than that, I'm gonna wrap it up because I know we're kinda running a little bit behind schedule. Next, Mrs. Well, Mrs. Carlson, I guess we'll do this next as a proclamation. We'll turn it over to you. I guess that's number three, then I just gotta mention something else afterwards.
Okay.
Yes, it's all yours.
As some of you may know, we're very proud of the fact that Sherwood Village had, Sherwood Valley, sorry, they called it Sherwood Village by the state of the country. They have gone resident-owned co-op, which is really exciting because this is the first one in Rhode Island to do so. So there's 170 units, and this gives a lot more financial security to the people who are living there, who mostly are on fixed incomes, as we know. So I'd like to invite, who's here for?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Audrey Pickering, President.
This is Audrey Pickering. She's the President of their board. She's worked very hard and it's taken at least a couple of years.
No, it was six months we had.
No, but haven't you kind of been in this year?
I've been in it five years up here.
Oh, okay. So, do you want to say anything?
No, everybody here has been more than helpful. You can't ask for a better group of people. They are all in the same, yes, they've been behind me 100 percent.
Right.
I have no, except now we need a lot of help.
And the town is here to help you?
Yes.
Right? Absolutely. Okay, then. So, the Town of Coventry, State of Rhode Island, and Providence Plantations. Proclamation presented to Sherwood Valley Cooperative Housing Corporation. Whereas on January 16th, 2018, the homeowners of Sherwood Valley Mobile Home Park purchased their 170 home neighborhood. And whereas the purchasing becomes the 213th nationally networked resident-owned community. And whereas this model preserves homes as permanently affordable, cost-efficient, and achieves long-term security as a home ownership model. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Coventry extends its sincerest congratulations to the homeowners of Sherwood Valley Co-op Housing Corporation, becoming the first housing co-op corporation in the state of Rhode Island. In testimony whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 12th day of February 2018.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Okay. Thank you. And Mrs. Lavoy, next, number B4. Matter of the approval of the town council minutes. I guess you got it in front of us, so not much more to say on that. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 22nd meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Yes. On page, oh, sorry. Sorry. Okay. Page 14 of 43, which is actually page two of the minutes, it's kinda confusing. Under, in the middle, where it says, "Mr. Waters replied, 'This information was provided December 11th,' and he would get me another copy." It's regarding the vacuum truck? He's gone.
He went to find one of the speakers for tonight.
Oh.
He thought he was in the lobby, so he excused himself for just a minute.
I still had, the point was I didn't get the information. Okay. Then.
Okay, but the minutes, the minutes reflect.
That he was supposed to, but I didn't. Okay. Can I add a note? Oh, on page 27 of 43, I guess it's the fourth paragraph from the bottom. Counsel one calls and asks what the thought is behind having a council member on the sewer subcommittee, and do we know why? I thought there was more discussion regarding that question, and then I think I said if somebody from council is going to be on there, they should be a non-voting member of the sewer subcommittee? So just to note that. I don't know. I mean, I thought, it was a couple of weeks ago. And then on page 30 of 43, third paragraph, well, actually, fourth paragraph, no, third paragraph. Motion made by Councilman LaBassinier, seconded by McGee, to approve. The vote was taken. Councilwoman Carlson and Bacon abstained. I did not abstain because I didn't get to vote because it got closed down so quickly. I never got a vote. I was still asking questions, and there was no vote, so I do not agree with the word abstention or abstained in here. So I'd like that removed and say that I did not have the opportunity to vote. And then the meeting was abruptly adjourned, and again, Carlson and Bacon abstained. And actually, I was still asking questions. I didn't abstain, and I voted no to adjourning. So I'd like it noted in the minutes that I did not vote to adjourn. I voted no against adjourned.
I also, on the same, I, those were my highlights. I did not have an opportunity to vote, and then on the last close meeting, I voted no.
Okay. So noted on their comments, I would leave it as did not vote. Opportunity was there, it just did not occur.
No.
And on the other thing is.
No.
No, I voted no to adjourn.
Then put that, that'll be their request for the minutes. My comments that did not vote, but put how you want, and.
Well, I said specifically no.
Okay. Councilwoman LaBassinier.
Actually, it's on the same page, on page 30. I, it was, it was a little bit of ruckus at the end of last meeting, and I actually didn't hear Councilwoman Bacon say that she wanted noted that Councilman LaBassinier was on his cellphone before we took the vote. But when I was reading it, I kinda had to chuckle because, you know, it, Mrs. Bacon, if you really wanna see, you know, she charged me with being on my cellphone. I have my cellphone right there, and every now and then, something pops up on there, and I would like it, if you want it noted that I was on my cellphone, I'd really love to have the content of all my texts that I received, okay, was my daughter's bowling scores from the night that she just got done bowling on Monday night. So I'd like to add that in there, so, because entering this into a public record like that, you're trying to make my vote look like it was a nefarious deed before I took it before the vote. That's my, that's my perception. Okay? So I would like to put this in there, that that's the text that I received. It's dated and the time, 9:12, three and a half hours, or three, three hours and 12 minutes after our meeting started, so I would like to send it into our record, please. Thank you very much.
Okay.
This is the text I received.
So noted.
So everybody will know.
Anyone else on the minutes to be approved?
Yes, we have been told we're not supposed to be on our phones during the meeting.
I wasn't on my phone.
You obviously were. You were texting. And it, while we were having a very heated discussion.
There was no heat.
You were, you know, but I mean, you.
It was not a nefarious thing, and again, it's something that you've done reverse things to try to discredit what we're doing and to discredit the vote, like that was something that is gonna be in the permanent record. And so, so therefore, my text will be in the permanent record.
We are here to represent the people, and while we're doing that, and, no, I shouldn't be able to have my say, Glenn. So when we're sitting up here, we should be giving, we should be paying attention. Obviously, that does not happen. When you're on the cellphone and you are during a discussion and vote, it had to be noted.
Mrs. Bacon, you've had nothing but disdain for anything that we've voted on, so I wouldn't expect any indifference.
Okay. Any other comments before we approve the minutes?
Get all the minutes in the next minutes.
A motion is made to approve and seconded with the so noted individual note. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. Minutes approved. Okay. Next, we have council updates. Mr. McGee, are you with us? I'll start with you down there on my peaceful far-right side.
It's actually been a good couple of weeks in our district, so we have, I have nothing to report this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Working this way. Councilwoman Bacon, District 5.
Yes, hi. I don't know if I should direct this towards Graham or Nick. I'm not 100 percent sure, but we have our rooster back in District 5, Waltham, White Oak Court. It has been crowing away, or whatever it does early in the morning and throughout the day. Who should the residents contact regarding this, especially on the weekends? Who do they contact? I know roosters are not permitted. Again, it's coming from the area of Dorit Court. So what should the residents do? Who should they contact?
Yeah, I believe in the past, we've had Arizona enforcement out there. In the past, we've had zoning enforcement go out. On the weekends, I would call in to probably the town non-emergency line to report it and see if, I don't know if, just so it's on the record of what time and where the address is. I think in the past.
Not 100, like I said, it's in the area of Dorit Court.
I know in the past, when we went out to investigate it, it was difficult to locate the offender. I'll have to go back and look to see what the resolution was at that time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Carlson, District 1.
Okay. Couple of notices for meetings this week. Tomorrow night will be the first meeting for the Comprehensive Plan Committee, 6:30 at the Annex. Everybody is invited. If you don't know what the Comprehensive Plan is, see me later, and I'll explain it. It's an incredibly important document for the town. It's like the Bible for the town and where we're going in the future. On Wednesday, there's a sewer subcommittee meeting at 7 o'clock in this, in this room. Okay. Other questions? I write little. Oh, okay. I had discussed this with Mr. Waters via email, the Camp Westwood Road issue with the aprons. Camp Westwood Road was resurfaced. There are some driveways that have gravel. Apparently, by ordinance, we don't really have an ordinance that requires any sort of apron at the bottom of your driveway to stop all that gravel, dirt, and everything running down the driveways, getting on the new road surfaces, causing either icing during this time of year, or when we have heavy rains, it's all gravel. Cars are probably wearing down the surface. Is there anything we can do about that? And it's not just Camp Westwood, but that happens to be a brand-new surfaced road that's come to my attention.
I looked into this with the Public Works Director. We can't mandate that they pave their driveways, so it's very difficult to tell the homeowner say, "You need to pave your driveway if it's a dirt driveway."
But is there anything when they're resurfacing that they can do along the edge?
That the town can do?
Right. Like a burn?
I'd have to look into that.
Okay. What'd you do there for me? Let me know, because I know it's causing some problems there. I know there's a problem on my, on my road, too, with icing, so that comes down the hill. The next thing is, how are we doing with our Flicker study for District 1 from the turbines?
We're trying to locate some information on the type of turbine to get it to the consultant.
I probably have that.
Do you? Okay.
Yep.
Just handed a bunch of files to planning today to go through, to see if that information's on there.
If you can't find it, let me know. I've got extensive files on the turbines. And the, oh, and then I've asked for a, an amendment to both the gun range, to have that amended in the ordinances, and the abutters notices for any subdivisions, wind turbines, solar program, you know, solar applications. So Mr. Waters and Mr. Gorm and I will meet with the Planning Department and start getting something in the works for amending these two ordinances and seeing, you know, what we can do to fix the situation for notices, and also to take the allowance for gun ranges and put them in a better location, or no outdoor gun range in a residential area. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman LaBassinier, District 2.
Well, District 2, I wanted to mention that we did have our little town hall talk, and I wanted to thank President Shidley for joining us this past Saturday morning. We had about 16 or 17 folks overall, which was, which was very nice. We had a lot of discussion. We discussed the possible changes to ordinances for the gun range and notification. We discussed, we discussed the sewers. We discussed a number of different topics. It, we're, I haven't scheduled another one at this time, but I'm, I think through the budget process, we may need one more, one or two more Saturday mornings, so I do want to mention, I thank, thank the folks for coming, and it was, it was a, it was a very productive meeting, I think. And I've got a number of notes for the, for the manager and our town solicitor for some of the things that we've spoken about.
Okay. Thank you. District 4, just wanted to mention that I had one resident email me regarding the structure that was put up by our school department for the maintenance of vehicles at Oak Haven School, a concern with a window in the house being broken with the drilling, and just some concerns overall. At, at this time, I'd like to just pass it on down to the manager and whether it be the school department. I know school committee member Florio also got a copy of that email, just to address it the best we can, or at least give answers as to why. And basically, that's it on District 4. Next, we have under B6, we have a discussion on the water issues at the Center of New England. Mr. Matt McGowan is here tonight, and Mr. Gorm, would you like to, or Mr. Waters, either way, lead into this one as we go?
Sure. Mr. McGowan is here tonight. Mr. McGowan, if you'd like to come up. There's a, a number of weeks ago, I kind of recall the date precisely, but there is a Ecoli announcement for the Center of New England where a boil water advisory was issued. There's some confusion over the communication between the town, the receiver, Mr. McGowan, and Kent County Water and the Department of Health for the state. At the request of the Town Council, I asked Mr. McGowan to be here to answer any questions and to give a brief statement about how the notification failed to go out and how the Ecoli, I guess outbreak, for lack of a better term, came up, and some more background information, and to answer any questions that the council might have of him.
Very good. Thank you for coming, then, Mr. McGowan.
Thank you.
Go right ahead with your presentation.
Thank you for having me. So as background, I'm the receiver of the Center of New England Development, which is essentially the undeveloped area of the Center of New England, which is a large multi-use development that spans three towns, the towns of East Greenwich, West Greenwich, and Coventry. I was appointed as permanent receiver in January of 2013. Shortly thereafter, I became aware of the fact that there was some process that the former principal of the Center of New Development, Mr. Cambio, had going on with the Rhode Island Department of Health Water Quality Office. And so, to make a very long story short, there was some resistance to my having a seat at the table when there were gonna be some discussions between Mr. Cambio and the RIDOH Water Quality Office. I was ultimately appointed to be the special master of the water system at Center of New England. And thereafter, discovered that even though that system had been operational for about a decade, it had never been licensed or certified through the Rhode Island Department of Health. So thereafter, I became the receiver. We did what had to be done to have the water systems there at the Center of New England certified and licensed by the Rhode Island Department of Health. We did that at considerable cost and expense. It was the first time in a decade that it had ever been certified and licensed. And it's been certified and licensed as two separate public water systems. One relates to the water that comes in at the New London Turnpike entry point. The other relates to the water as it comes in at the Hopkins Hill Road entry point. So there are two public water systems there at C and E. Once you have a public water system, and I have Alex Bishop here from Northeast Water Solutions, Inc., which is the company that does the water testing for us at Center of New England. Once you have a public water system, there's requirements that it be tested, and it's tested on a regular basis. There are 10 tests that are undertaken monthly. Typically, there are five tests taken in the first couple of weeks of the month. There are five more taken at the end of the month, the last two weeks of the month. On December 21st of last year, there was a positive test, or a present test, for Ecoli. And it was a positive or present test for Ecoli, taken at a sample in one of the faucets in one of the men's rooms at the Granville at Greenwich apartment complex in West Greenwich. Thereafter, there were nine tests done for Ecoli. All of those tests came back negative for Ecoli. That is, without the presence of Ecoli. On the 26th of December, we had a conference call, we had a conversation with the RIDOH people about this situation. I explained to them that I was concerned about the fact that they were insisting that I send out a notice that said that Ecoli is present, present test, Ecoli is present in the water at Center of New England, when nine test results showed that there was no Ecoli there. And I said, "I don't want to get people in a tizzy about this situation. Certainly, if there's a real hazard, a real public health, health concern, we'll send out the notice." But we had nine subsequent tests that came back negative for Ecoli. To make a long story short, they said, "Fine, we'll think about it. We'll have a conference call." We had a conference call the next day, on the 27th. We had further conversations about the fact that apparently, the boil water notice was issued not because of a retest that showed the presence of Ecoli, but rather because of a presumption that apparently exists in the law, that where you can't gain entry to a test point, where that earlier test point was one that tested positive for Ecoli or total coliform, there's a presumption in the law that it is presumed to have come back a second time with a positive Ecoli test result. I said, "We don't think that is the case. The only reason somebody wasn't able to get to that test point was because of a snowstorm. And can we please hold off on this until we find out whether there's really an Ecoli problem there or not?" One thing led to another, and ultimately, on December 29th, a Friday in the afternoon, I got a notice by email saying that I needed to send out a boil water notice. I said, "Fine, I'll send that out." I had the people at Peregrine Property Management poised to hit send on an email that would go out to all of the tenants and occupants at Center of New England, so we had been poised to go ahead and take care of that. But I said. But I said, your notice is inaccurate. It says that E. coli is present in the water at Center of New England. I said, respectfully, it's not present. We have nine subsequent test results that show it's not present. They insisted that I had to send that out. And then there was a problem with the notice because they defined the two public water systems. They defined those systems in such a way, and it's their definition, where they created the impression that there was E. coli not just in the New London Turnpike Entry Point system, but also in the Hopkins Hill Road Entry Point system, which was not the case. And I said, it is inaccurate for that reason as well. Nonetheless, they insisted that that be sent out. This is the Friday before the New Year's Day holiday weekend. Late in the afternoon, we did our best to send it out. The next day, I believe that I spoke with your town manager, provided the information to him. I was not able to do it that night. I was able to do it the next day. We sent a descriptive explanatory email about what happened the following day. And thereafter, I corresponded with the town and with any other officials about this situation. The matter was fully rectified. The faucet or two faucets were removed. There was chlorine that was added to the system. The water there is fine. There's no reason at all to be concerned about the water. The water comes from Kent County Water Authority. It's pre-tested, pre-treated before it even gets into the two public water systems. And the water, once in those systems, is tested 10 times a month. And all of those test results are shared freely with the DOH. We'd be happy to share those with the town as well.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. So I believe, as we catch it on TV, it probably got magnified a little bit bigger than what the problem, and people got concerned. You know, people are concerned nowadays and rightly so. But I think that it was rectified within the week, is what you're saying?
It was rectified within a matter of days.
Well, okay.
Yes, with everybody's cooperation, including the people at Granville who jumped on it.
Exactly. And that was initially, not that, you know, necessarily their fault, but that occurred in West Greenwich and it affected us. Okay, any other questions of the individual council members regarding the discussion and explanation? If not... yes, okay.
Just one quick question. Did you ever determine the source of the one test of E. coli or was it just a fluke or?
No, it was in one faucet in the men's room that was adjacent to the fitness center at the large Granville at Greenwich apartment complex that has hundreds of residents there in West Greenwich. And that faucet wasn't just sanitized, it was removed entirely. And it's been subsequently retested. And again, the water is fine. And I understand the concern. Respectfully, I think the DOH was blowing things out of proportion. But we did what we had to do. We cooperated. We did the best we could under the circumstances.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for staying with us tonight and making that explanation, and we appreciate it. Thank you, sir, for coming out as the backup if we need it. All right. Next, we're down to the next C section on the agenda now. Don't know, Mr. Gorham, would you like to at least start the explanation on this matter? And I know it's... Sarah Malli, she's here tonight for us. Go ahead.
Sure. This is item C on the agenda. So the town council will be sitting as the liquor licensing board. There has been alleged violation, according to the police department, of a Class B license at the Harris Bar and Grill. And so this is a public hearing. So you should declare the public hearing open and then be willing to entertain the evidence. And then I'm sure if the applicant wants to be heard, we will take everything into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Motion to open a public hearing.
It's removed.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're open public hearing. And is it Ms. Malli?
Yes, Ms. is fine.
Okay. Welcome and go right ahead. Appreciate your efforts tonight.
Yes, I'm here tonight with one of the officers from Coventry. We're going to go through some testimony as to what happened the night of January 11, 2018. This is about ordinance 153-2 and 153-3. 153-2, specifically Section B, states that employees shall leave the premises of any sort of establishment that's under the control of the liquor board within one hour of closing unless they give prior notice to the police department and it's for some sort of legitimate business purpose. 153-3 states that if there's any sort of disturbance, fight, or any sort of violation within that establishment, that an employee or the licensee himself must contact the police department. Okay, I would like to have Officer Fishnell come up and just go through some testimony as to what occurred.
Okay, please.
Good evening, sir. Just again, for the record, your name, I know it's been stated once, but...
It's Officer Steven Seaman.
All right, very good. Go right ahead then, how you proceed.
Can you just state where you're employed?
Coventry Police Department.
And what is your job title?
Trooper.
And how long have you been in the Coventry Police Department?
Just over two years now.
Okay, and were you on shift January 11, 2018?
I was.
What shift were you working?
Eight o'clock, so it was 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m.
Okay, and was here? And were you sent on any dispatch to Harris Bar and Grill during your shift?
I was.
About what time was that?
Zero three thirteen hours.
Okay, and why were you sent there?
It was a disturbance that came in.
Okay, and did you go inside the establishment?
I did.
And can you just tell us what happened when you went inside?
Initially, when we got there, there was, we located five parties. They had all been arguing with one another. We had to separate all five parties from one another and sort of get what their stories were.
Can you tell us what the stories were?
One of the bartenders, I got called into work that night. I believe her name was Christine I. Galloway. She had been drinking while working. I guess this wasn't the first time it happened. She caused a lot of the customers to leave, started arguments with them. So at the end of her shift, she told us she was fired from her job.
Okay, and when the customers were in the building, did anybody tell you about what time that was?
Not specifically.
Okay, but did anybody call the police while they were customers?
No.
Okay. About what time... So when you arrived, that was after it was closed and there was no customers in there?
Well after, it was three fifteen.
Do you know what time the establishment closes?
Well, I am.
So this was well after the employees were supposed to have exited the building, correct?
About two hours after.
Okay. Did they tell you why they were there so late?
Yeah, the owner's daughter, Deborah, said that she was helping cleaning the establishment.
Do you know if anybody called the police department to inform Coventry that anybody would be staying past one hour after closing?
I don't believe so.
And do you know who it was who called the police to report the disturbance?
Yes, his name was David Hughes. He wasn't an employee. It was actually, I believe, boyfriend of the female that was fired earlier on the night.
Okay. So do you know why he was in the building?
I guess the female that was fired wanted to go back because they owed her money for two separate shifts and she worked one earlier.
All right, and did anybody appear to be intoxicated while you were present?
Everyone there was intoxicated.
And the party members, did they?
Deborah and David, yes, because they wanted to leave and they're being abused.
If any member of the council has questions, I think it's...
Do we have a police report for this, like we know when they do? There was nothing in the packet.
I wonder if you want to talk to them.
It can be offered. It's not essential. It's the testimony more than anything else, which I would encourage you to pay attention to and not the police report. Does the applicant have any objection to the... Excuse me, does the license holder, excuse me, have any objection to the police report being offered to the town council for consideration? Is the license holder here?
Is the license holder here? I guess it's a good question.
All right, you can offer the... if they're not here, then I don't see any reason why it can't be distributed.
Is this just the one copy, sir?
I only have one copy.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think after you've done, maybe we can get copies just for our record. Regarding the matter again, I think we got the letter, at least, from the chief that went to the, I guess, proprietor, dated January 18th. Chief, you're here, are you not, sir? Oh, I saw him earlier. Okay. As it states, it was 3:13 a.m., the matter. And again, the Coventry PD got the call and you got sent. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I read where it's a melee, it's with five individuals?
Yes, sir.
And did I hear that they did get arrested or did not?
No one got arrested.
I didn't think I heard it.
No, no one got arrested.
Okay, just mass chaos and two got the breathalyzer test.
We ran a Hilsbrady test because they wanted to drive.
Right, on two.
On two of them and they both failed the test.
So they...
So we had to arrange rides for them to leave.
You arranged rides, okay. Now, the other three that were there?
One of them lives upstairs.
Oh, I see, okay.
And the other two went with, the other two who arranged the rides.
So basically, we have, I guess, a fight within. And you got, the police department got the call. That's how we arrived, the town arrived. And this is what is before us, which is, again, violation on a couple of notes as far as the town's concerned. Now, the one, Title III alcoholic beverages. Is this a state statute that we have before us? It's a law here. It's a state statute title down at the bottom, what I want down the line.
Says it's from East Greenwich.
It is state, correct?
Yeah.
And other cities and towns are mentioned?
It's Darsh.
Right, this is state.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. Okay, all right, so basically, I know we have our ordinances and violations. Chief, are you here? Colonel, if you... I mean, we have the letter, you sent the proprietor. He's not here as far as I know. Okay. So we've heard the, and I know it's still open for any questions that the council may have, but I'm just, basically, I have a question. Is this happened more than once as far as violations within this past year?
For all the businesses, when you change the ordinances, we notify everyone.
Right.
So it would be a first strike for that, for this business. There would be no, after that change.
Oh, for the new change, I got it.
We'd be affected for that with first strikes. This would be a first offense for ICE.
Okay, for this particular event?
It was.
All right, I'm just wondering regarding, can we even go into past occurrences, prior occurrences? I mean, not the penalties and is it a situation that, you know, we need to address besides this individual melee?
I don't think so, sir. I think we could treat it as a first offense.
All right, that's the question I had. I knew you were here, that's why I wanted to ask you.
I mean, for us, the after-hours violation, it was in there after hours. They need to call us if they're going to be there.
Well, I understand all that. And they didn't.
I've got a question.
Yes, okay, and other council people go right ahead.
My question is, I'm still a little unclear. There was one girl, was a bartender who they tried, who they fired that night. So and then you said that she returned, so I'm assuming that she probably left. Did they tell you what time that they, that she actually left and then returned, obviously, with a boyfriend or something?
Yeah, they said they terminated her at the end of her shift and then she came back afterwards with a boyfriend. Like I said, because she was looking for pay for two shifts that she worked earlier for them.
Okay, yes.
And because she was fired, she didn't know if she would get the money on a different day or...
Right, okay, so they came back and obviously probably got a little bit heated. Now, the other two people that were there, were they friends of the bartender and the boyfriend? Is that what it was?
The other two people there was the owner's daughter.
Well, you said there were five people altogether?
It was.
Okay, so one of them was the daughter, but then there was, you said there was another couple that left? Two that couldn't drive and then they left with someone else, so...
So it was the owner's daughter, her boyfriend, one of the gentlemen that works there, he's like the maintenance employee, he lives upstairs.
Oh, okay.
And then the bartender got fired and her boyfriend.
And they all, even though they fired her, they left in the same vehicle? Is that what I heard or?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought I'd heard that the four people all went in the same vehicle and...
Both couples, most definitely.
Oh, okay, all right, I was going to say, because it sounded like, you know, the bartender fired and her boyfriend came back looking for, you know, definitely looking for some altercation type stuff there, so... And it's, but they didn't say what time they, you know, they said what time, end of her shift was?
12:30, that's when they fired her.
12:30, they fired her and then she left and then obviously came back, so it was probably pretty heated for a while, I would say, again, to try and remove the... All right, great, I just wanted to try to get the facts straight in my head. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McGee?
Was there actually a fight or was it an argument?
It was a verbal argument between all the parties that were there.
A verbal argument. I'm certainly glad that there was no alcohol involved as far as serving alcohol. That's been an issue we've had, you know, lately with the Jewish establishment. So I'm glad that's not the case, but, and there was no phone call to say over after hours, so...
Obviously, the dispatcher received a phone call and set up chat saying, hey, would you stay over for next 45 minutes, help me, or come do this? And I never received the chat. I don't think anyone else did that either, so...
All right. Because for the most part, it's pretty good business over there. I'm surprised, I know we have, you know, talked over the past, but I'm surprised that, you know, this happened and hopefully it doesn't happen anymore. But, you know, I'm glad there was, I don't know, serving alcohol. To me, that's more of a risk to the people, but certainly, you know, we don't like to see that stuff happening. But thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Hi. I just have, good, I just have a couple of questions. So this happened after 3:00 a.m., you said?
Yeah, it was, we got the call at 3:13 a.m.
Okay, so, and they were all intoxicated, so that means from closes at 1:00 to 3:00?
I mean, there was no signs of open containers or bottles or cans anywhere, but they were all intoxicated when we got there, so...
Okay. I also, I just want to, I just pulled my packet from last year because they came, the same establishment came before our board on January 9th and we did have a fine of $150 given to them. And it was because on September 18th, the patrons were observed drinking after 2:07 a.m. And then again, there was a verbal warning given to that bartender, Deborah, on August 2016. Again, opened containers after hours. And now, fast forward a year later, we're looking January and we're looking at a melee and folks, apparently, you didn't see it, but they were intoxicated after hours. So I just wanted to point that out in case everyone forgot that, you know, they did come before us.
I do recall.
Okay.
But thank you for, again, pointing it out. Any other questions of the council members?
Chief, I apologize, I meant to bring my ordinances with me and forgot. So are you saying that because we have amended the ordinances, the clock gets reset?
Well, I think that was the discussions. Now, once we amended the ordinance, that we would just go forward with the, you know, first, second, third offenses active update of changing the ordinance. And the businesses where I've... And the businesses were, I believe, notified as well. So like I said, I would say this is a first offense for Harris. We've changed the ordinances a little bit, we updated them to, generally, near a state bar, but it was a, you know, it was a clean slate for every bar in town. And we notified them, here's the new, you know, it's really not new, but here's the playing field, and this would be the first offense from now on.
I just have a hard time with that, when it's a repeat offender. And I understand what you're saying, I'm just, honestly, I just don't remember that part, so I apologize, but I have a hard time with justifying that because they're coming back again.
Well, I believe the ordinance also talks about, after a two or three-year period, the...
Twenty-one months.
It's 21 months, I guess, so it's two years.
When we enacted the changes, we created a graduated system of penalizing, so that each time someone returned within 24 months, they were subject to a greater fine. I agree with the Colonel's interpretation of the statute. I think the only fair way to apply it, when you have the graduated offenses, is to begin with the first offense under the ordinance being the first offense, and that you can't, under the ordinance as amended, that would be the first offense. I think it's unfair to do it any other way, because you could go as far back as you want.
Well, I knew, I mean, I remember the 24-month issue and the graduated fines, but...
Unless, and the general rule of construction in, for all statutes in Rhode Island is that unless, and ordinance is, that unless it is stated explicitly in the ordinance or statute that is to be retroactive, it is prospective. So I think the only fair way to construe this is the way the Colonel is construing it, which is that it's going forward. So this would be their first offense under the ordinance as amended, so.
Can I make a couple of points? I mean, we're not going to agree on this, obviously, but I agree with what Colonel and yourself say, so I'd like to make a motion that we find this business under the first offense, and we can move on. Thank you.
A second. Okay, well, we have to close, or ask for any other comments.
I'll withdraw my second.
All right, before we go on any further, and we've heard from our councilor on that, and thank you, Colonel, and Officer, and Mrs. Mallie, Sarah. Anyone in the audience would like to comment? Yes, sir, regarding this matter. Good evening, and again, just for the record, tonight, in the...
I guess you know me pretty well. My name is Richard Reynolds. I live in 501 Village Queen Circle, Coventry. Okay, my problem is this. We pay the same taxes as the rest of the people in this town. Excuse me. Not a member of this town.
Sir, excuse me, this is public hearing only, only for the matter that we have before us regarding Harris Bar and Grill. Public comment will come later on. General.
Next.
Next, okay? So if there's any unclarity, we apologize, but you'll have to hold those comments for later on. We're asking for any public comment regarding this matter before us.
When it said public comment, I thought it was, that was a...
I'm sorry, a public hearing regarding this matter. Thank you. Okay, anyone in the public want to discuss any comments regarding this matter before us, the Harris Bar and Grill? If not, I guess then we could have a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed now, and we have a motion on the floor and a second.
If you bring that back, I withdrew.
All right, so let's start over again to have another motion or a new motion, Mr. McGee, if you want to make it.
I would like to redo that motion and make it as a first offense and fine accordingly, and that's it.
Okay, and second, and just for clarification, Mr. Gorm, the first offense now and the new ordinance is, is that the five hundred?
It's $500.
That's right, I just wanted to get it on the record, okay? So that's what we're voting on. And again, we'll go with the Colonel's suggestion and the legal advice from our town solicitor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, discussion afterwards?
No, I just have, can we have confirmation that they, they get this, that they're told this is their first offense, it's 500, and then can we get confirmation that they paid the $500 fine to the town of Coventry?
Yep, this is myself.
Please? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right, that concludes that matter. All right, now we go to D, which is public comment in general, and, sir, it's your turn to...
Mr. Reynolds, you're on.
Mr. Reynolds, you're on. And again, general notice, we start the new policy, it's within three minutes, respectful, non-confrontational, just matter of fact. And I didn't read the list, but we'll go from there, so go ahead, sir.
I'll hurry it up for you.
No, 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 you got the three minutes, use it.
Problem, here's the problem, you know, I've already given my name, my address, so...
It's fine, yep.
The problem is this, we pay the same taxes as everyone else in this town, but you know something? We don't get a single pay from the people. Nothing, no pickups, no snowblowing, we own nothing. We have to pick it up ourselves. I don't think that's very fair. I think either, something should be done about it, no question. The last time I talked to you about it, you said, "Well, we don't own the road." You were right, you absolutely don't own the road. But now, I hear rumors that the state might buy it and might take it over. So, would the town be willing to sit down with us and say, "Listen, the road is now everybody's road." It's a good possibility that we can talk things about doing something for us. There's 85 condos here, and we pay $340,000 a year in taxes. And do you know what we get? One, big zero, nothing. Most of it are senior citizens, veterans, widows and widers, widows, and everyone else in there. This is, this is a community that does not put any stress on you whatsoever. Your schools are not bothered by us, we have no children, our children aren't raised. And here we are, sitting back on the back line, and you people are just saying, "Okay, we'll get what we can from there." It's not fair, just that simple.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any comments?
Just a valid rumor, the state taking over the road. And again, we have a lot of private residencies, and they're all on the same boat.
Okay. Well, let's get out that boat.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking my comment. My name's Gary Cody. I live at 29 Patine Street in Coventry. I'm probably as close to anybody, as anybody, to Oak Haven School, and I don't have any broken windows from them putting up that new, that new building, believe me. So I check that one real carefully. Because I live right there, as you know. Secondly, with the school department taking that building over as a physical maintenance facility, I have to tell you how impressed the residents of that neighborhood are with the school department being there. They are respectful of the people who live in the neighborhood, they're not in and out at 5:00 in the morning, that, I mean, I didn't know, when they said that somebody had a broken window from the drilling of that, from them digging the post holes to put that building up, I was really surprised, because living right there, I didn't know the building was going up, I didn't know the structure was going up until I saw the green cover go over the top of it. I never saw it from my house, I live next door. I never heard any drilling, I never heard, I heard the machines running over there, sure. They use lull forklifts to put up the piping and stuff like that for the building, but listen, I think it was a good decision on the part of the town to put the school department over there and let them use it as a physical maintenance facility. It's nice living next door to a piece of property that's not an abandoned piece of property anymore. They're keeping it clean, they're keeping...